Okay, hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Can you do a call for us? Is Tom there?
Yes, I'm right here.
All right, can you do-
President Franklin?
Thank you.
President Franklin?
Aye.
Commissioner Duckett?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanchett?
Aye.
Commissioner Laught?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. We are now going to move on to Department Committee and Commissioner Report. And the commenting procedure is going to be different with regards to this too. So if you have a question or comment that arises from any of these reports, you just take a note of it and at the end, when we do general public comments, that's when we'll hear those comments and questions at that time. And I will turn it over to Chief, thank you.
Alrighty, for the month of December, we had a one property damage report, one domestic call, domestic standby, we had three vehicle accident reports, two suspicious persons, surprisingly, ten commercial alarm calls, four check on the welfare, one warrant service, which is somebody who called and said that they wanted to turn themselves in, two holdup alarm calls, one traffic complaint, one hit and run, one theft, and one disorderly call. For the month of December, we did our normal chiefs meetings with the different agencies. Myself and Sergeant Erby, Code Officer Stewart participated in the Christmas tree lighting that we did and had on Main Street. I participated in a threat, a holiday threat call with the Department of Homeland Security, which is the federal government version. Talked about the different threats around holidays and what we were seeing as trends and opportunities to make those things go away or be minimized for the holiday season. Myself, the mayor, and the board commissioners participated in swearing in our new officer, Officer Johnson, who started last month. I participated in the Criminal Justice Coordinating Meeting. They do that quarterly with Judge Adams and members of the County Council, County Executive's Office, and things of that nature. Also, the Carjack and Task Force that we have monthly participated with that. And Officer Brooks, he actually participated with the City of Highsville's Shop With A Cop program, where each year they have children that are in need, so they go out. This year, because of COVID, they went out and bought all of the presents for the children that they had on their wish list and took it back to them while they were in a in a safe location with their parents. So they did have a couple pictures that we took to help display that. And so that was it pretty much for the month of December. We had fifty-five parking tickets. We fortunately did not have to write any code violation letters, which is good, maybe because it was cold, so. That's pretty much it for the month. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have questions or comments? Commissioner Duckett? Commissioner Hanchett?
I'm good, thank you, good job.
Commissioner Laught?
No questions.
Okay, all right, thanks. Let's move over to Darnell.
All right, good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. For the Public Works Status Report for the month of December, myself, crew member Shekels, Crew lead Gibson, we set up and maintained a town's tree lighting ceremony. I had a prep meeting with a few colleagues from other municipalities to plan for what was supposed to be our first winter weather event. That event did not take place. Excuse me. We're still actively hunting for a low mileage used heavy-duty pickup truck. We worked traffic control for an accident at Main Street in Old Marlboro Pike, which closed both lanes for roughly forty-five minutes, where we had to detour around the monument. Maintenance and beautification. Truck 216 went to call equipment to have new salt spreader installed. The old salt spreader hanger system was shored up to receive the old salt spreader, and it was test fitted to the dump truck 003 for feasibility of potential use. We installed shelving units, indoor and outdoor, pod lighting and wall tie-ins to the Public Works cargo trailer in preparation for the next event season. We had a rep from Long Fence provide an incorrect quote to fix the down section of Public Works fencing. We're currently awaiting an updated quote. You know, we fixed a few down and non-working parking meters around town. For the main street and sidewalk, I met with Town Administrator Snyder to review the street engineering RFPs. Light pole seven on Marlboro Grove in the town homes was dug up, sleeved, and re- erected after being hit by motorists. Crew set up cones to serve as a pedestrian walkway on Water Street in front of the Malaria Building Construction. Weather-related, I monitored weather reports and reserve materials ahead of the incoming large-scale winter weather event that took place last week. And for refuse accumulation, bulked accumulations for solid waste things going to the landfill with 3.33 tons, and accumulations for yard waste collections, things going to Maryland Environmental, were 9.44 tons, and we had no dump body rentals for the month. And I will take any questions from our commissioners at this time?
I just want to quick say a big thank you to you and your crew for not last, let's work last month's work, yes, but last week's work. You guys worked hard and we appreciate it. Commissioner Duckett, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I also want to say thank you so much. I think they did a great job and they were so proactive, as always. So thank you so much, Public Works.
Commissioner Hanchett?
I just want to reach out and just say thank you for your job done and thank you for your hard work.
Commissioner Laught?
Just want to say thank you.
All right, thank you all, and I will pass those kudos along to the team.
Thank you. All right, now we have general government. Oh, yeah, so that's true. Sorry, Will.
No problem. Good evening, everyone. So for the month of December, which is pretty much our midway point of the fiscal year, as many of you know, our fiscal year begins in July, goes into June. So it is the midpoint. At this time, we start to look at where we sit at within our financial health for the fiscal year. That is something that we'll be talking about within the next meetings or so, such as the budget adjustments as well. Specifically for the month of December, we are, as again has mentioned previously, we're consistently seeing deposits for business license certifications within a town of Upper Marlboro. Myself and Miss Lucy and the team has done a great job of trying to track that. I think just last month, we had roughly about $4,000 that's come in. We're continuously trying to reconcile that portion of our budget. It's very weird, not weird, it's not all in one area. Sorry, as far as how we are able to pull the data and finances to track it all. So something that we, again, we try to monitor very, very closely, obviously, because we want to see how successful we are in that area. Parking meters are not doing as great as we would like. As we know, I think a portion of that, of course, is to the pandemic. Just when we started to see some increases on a monthly basis, such as eleven, twelve, and thirteen thousand dollars, we're starting to see now that begin to kind of plateau and decrease again. So that's an area within a new proposed budget adjustment that we're also going to have to look at and potentially to reduce in that area. Another thing is with taxes as well. So taxes, I think for the month of, not I think, but I know for the month of December, sorry, we only brought in about $5,000. We will try to hopefully look to bring in a little bit more in the month of January, which is usually a good month after the holidays for real property taxes. So we'll do that, well, we hope to do pretty better in that area come this month. Once we see for the month of February, once we look at the month of February. And then also, on the public utility side, you may see 534,000. So we did bill Pepco for their public utilities within a town of Upper Marlboro. Their monies is, we know is on our way, they're usually good with paying that. So that's, this is formatting is more in a crude basis rather than a cash basis. So that's why you see that sizable increase from the previous month, which was roughly about 200,000, and now you stayed up at 534,000. On the expense side, we did receive our Maryland State Retirement Employer Contribution Invoice, which was about $64,000 this year. That is a combination of the percentage that the town has to contribute to our employee pension, as well as the admin fees and such within that bill. So that's something that happens annually. It has increased, obviously, as we have more employees, that bill types of invoice increases as for the employer's side of the contribution. Town attorney and legal fees were about 6,000 this month, in the month of December. And also, we had about a $21,000 bill for, sorry, not 21,000. We had some bills for our planning firm and also the individuals who assisted us with the acquisition of properties as well. On the, a few things that will be, has kind of been discussed in the last few months, and we're most certainly driving in the right direction to start to really use some of these monies, such as the American Rescue Plan. So over the last few months, we have been, of course, purchasing items such as supplies, materials for PPE gear, things that are heavily tracked, and we try, and we, sorry, transfer those dollars over to our general operating funds. One, another thing that has happened with the Board of Commissioners support on, we were able to provide hazard pays to those employees who has worked throughout the pandemic, that pretty much had to come outside of their households to continue to provide those government services. So that was something that happened also in the month of December. Capital improvement projects, we have made our debt service payments. We are looking to do more within the capital improvement project for this fiscal year. As you may know, the FY 2022 budget did allocate roughly about 500,000 in that area for different assets and improvements to better do projects through and around the town. At the moment, currently, we were supposed to report on the American Rescue Plan as of January 30th, but now it is pushed back to April 30th. So we do have some time to report on, to provide our first report for the uses of those monies. Myself and our town accountant have been, again, tracking that information well and making sure we stay abreast on what the use is going to be for. With that, I don't have any other comments, but of course, I'm open for any questions or concerns you may have.
I think you will. And that report for the ARPA funds is to go to Treasury, yes?
Yes.
Commissioner Duckett, did you have anything?
No, not at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Hanchett?
Not at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Laught?
Not at this time, thank you, Will.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to the Clerk's Office.
I have nothing to report. Just a reminder about constant contact. If you're not getting your updates, sign up for them on the website.
Just Commissioner Duckett, any questions, comments?
No.
Commissioner Hanchett?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Laught?
No, no.
Thanks, guys. All right, then we'll move into committee reports, and we're going to start with Greenwell Consulting. Hi, Jacob.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right.
We can hear.
Perfect, I'm driving down to Annapolis right now. Session starts tomorrow, so I'm doing my annual migration from Western Maryland down to Central Maryland. But, um, so yeah, we're very excited. The, they're going to do a blended sort of virtual slash in-person session this year. So the House is going to be, the House will be virtual for the first three weeks, and the Senate is going to be on a, on a virtual schedule for committee hearings until about February, February 14th, middle of February. But we'll still be allowed to be in the buildings for meetings, which is great and different from last year, when all of the buildings were closed to the public. So yeah, we're very excited to be back down there. The first, the first order of business they will be undertaking down in Annapolis this session is the redistricting of the state legislative districts. So you can see on the map right here, District 23 is where, you know, Upper Marlboro is located. They are going to change it a little bit. The borders are going to shift slightly, but, you know, you'll still be in Senator Watson's district. The only, the only change is going to be that rather than having an A and a B, a 23A and a 23B, Upper Marlboro will actually gain a legislative representative in the House. So you will have three different, three different representatives in the House rather than just two, which is, is good. So as soon as, you know, we know who that third rep is going to be, we will bring them into Upper Marlboro and show them, show them around the town. So that is, they're going to tackle that within the first two weeks, and we will know the final maps probably by the start of February. So it is an election year, which means it's going to be pretty hectic down there. The list of prefiled bills is available. There's about, you know, a couple hundred of them that have been released so far. The most prominent of those is a bill that would put legalized cannabis on the referendum for this year. Both the Senate President and the House Speaker have voiced their support for that. So they're likely to push that and pass that. It's being introduced by delegates. And yes, we'll likely see that on the ballot in November. And, and yeah, so those are the, those are the two big items this year. Governor Hogan just released his, his hopes and his sort of wishlist for session, including his number one push this year is going to be tax credits for retirees. So now the leadership in the House and the Senate will get together and decide what from, what from his wishlist they'd like to sort of work into the budget. And we will, we will see where that goes, and we'll start sending our weekly reports to the town on, you know, our initiatives for, for Upper Marlboro, including the, looking at funding to complete the splash pad and playground, Upper Marlboro Playground Project, and just general updates on what the General Assembly is doing in Annapolis. And yeah, so that'll start next week, and I'll send you updates and the bills that we're tracking. And, you know, as always, I'm happy to take any questions, and, you know, feel free to reach out anytime during the session. It's going to be ninety days of craziness, but, you know, we'll be, we'll be here.
Thank you. Commissioner Duckett, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Commissioner Hanchett?
Not at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Laught?
Not at this time, thank you.
All right, thanks, Jacob. Let you go.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah. All right, let's, do we have, I think we have people from Historical. I see you guys, Patty and Brian on here.
First of all, I kind of had my hand written up. Are we not allowed to ask questions during these presentations?
Yeah, for time constraint issues, because the meetings were getting kind of long, we're going to put all those questions into the pub, general public comment, period.
Okay. All right, so we did participate in the, in the Christmas, the Christmas tree lighting and the Christmas event. We did not have an archive session in December. We will have one Saturday, the 15th of January. And that's all I have for the Historical Committee. I did, during the Christmas, during the Christmas event, we did get a couple of names, and we have added that to our distribution for notifications of events for the Historical Committee. And I've added those in as well.
That's good news. Commissioner Duckett, any questions? Commissioner Hanchett?
Not at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Laught?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Sorry, Janice, I can see your window, so when you shake your head.
Oh, yeah, oh, thank you.
I can't see everyone else's, but I can see. All right, thank you, Patty. So we're going to move on to events. I think I'm the only person from events here. Yeah, so the Events Committee had a meeting last week to establish a town events calendar for the calendar year coming up. And that is actually an item on this agenda, so we'll talk about that later. And they also started talking about Marlboro Day. Does anyone have any questions on that? Commissioner Duckett?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Hanchett?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Laught?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you. And I think we have Evelyn Stevens from the Sustainable Communities Work Group here. Hi, Evelyn.
Is some, are you? I got it. You hear me? I don't know what happened there. Hello, everyone, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Happy year.
I wanted to just say a few things and do it in some sort of order. On November 30th, the Sustainable Communities Work Group met to discuss the two FIP applications that we have. In attendance was Linda Pinoria, Patricia Finn, Sam White of MNC PPC, and myself. The MNC PPC liaison, Sam White, made comments about the applications before we submitted them to the state. We have talked with the applicants, and we are working on the changes that were suggested. Very many changes, but we hope to submit to the state before the end of January. And I want to let the board know that the FIP program is a continuous program. So that means that throughout the funding process or throughout the grant process, we continue to take applications. Most of the applications that we will be getting are from interested parties who were interested prior to FY 21. And this is the money that we have, FY 21 monies, so far that we, with the two applications, we have spent about half of our $50,000. Now, we have quarterly reports due since October, so we have submitted our October quarterly report that was approved. And we have submitted our January quarterly report that has also been approved. Of course, our next report will be due April 1st, and we, of course, attend to meet that deadline. Now, because of the new administration, we, I requested that we meet. And we were, the President and I were talking about January, but we decided that so much was going on that we tentatively spoke of a time, February the 2nd. Sir, I'm not sure whether, I thought that that was on calendar, but I am having trouble with my calendar. I don't see it, but I, if you agree, I think it was February 2nd that, that we will meet. And at that time, my thought was, because of the new administration, that we just go over what the Sustainable Communities Work Group has done, why we were formed, and what the expectations are of the new administration. I would like to hold any questions that you have, unless, of course, you know, you're free to ask me any questions right now. But would like to go more into detail at our February 2nd meeting. That's it for me.
Great, thank you. I do have that on the calendar, and I just put a note to resend that invite to you.
Right, thank you.
And Commissioner Duckett is going to join us at that time. So I guess I'm just going to ask Commissioner Hanchett and Commissioner Laught if they have any questions or comments. And you can always email us.
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Not at this time.
Hey, thank you. Look forward to seeing you.
Thank you, Evelyn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to Arts Council.
So the Arts Council has actually decided on two proposals, well, decided on the murals for the town. So we had, we've decided on Site 1, which is 14707 Main Street, and the artist for that is Latoya Peoples. And then on the Site 2 will be 5311 Water Street, and that artist is Eric Rix. So the town is going to be working with the Arts Committee to submit, working on the grant, so that once we receive the grant, then we'll work for, work with the Arts Committee to help manage that project and hopefully get these murals installed this year, 2022, which is the goal. I would like to say so thank you to all those folks that actually voted. We had voting online, so that you had an opportunity to do that. And if you have any questions, I wanted, I wish we had actually some photos, because I kind of should have asked for that, but I did not. If there's anything, Kyle, that you want to add to that, I know it's too late to ask for photos, but where can they actually go to see those photos of the, the, for the mural, the participants?
We'll have them later in the slides, because the board's approving them, Commissioner. It's just stamping, so we may have them later in this PowerPoint, but if not, they are on the Facebook page.
Okay.
If you go back, you just search murals on the town's Facebook page. We have a post up with the different proposals.
Yes, they are beautiful, so the winners are there. So if you want to take a look at that, please do so. We're expecting, this is going to be so exciting for the town to actually have this type of art here in our town that's indicative of our town's history and the community at large. So we're really excited about this.
Any questions? Thank you. I guess I'm just going to request that we put it, once we approve it tonight, then we make a Facebook post about it, so that way the pictures will be up there. Commissioner Hanchett, did you have any questions? Commissioner Laught?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
You're art.
And we'll move on to Green Team. Do I have anyone from Green Team? Okay, I will just report out for the Green Team. They are working on their bylaws, and I think they are pretty much ready to be turned into us for approval. And they are also doing the community garden work. We did do a little harvest before the storm, and we were hoping to get that over to the food bank. But with the storm and the school closures and all of that, they wound up mostly going to the volunteers. But we still have some plants in there, and so we'll be doing another harvest early spring, and hopefully that can get over to the food bank. They, we're also going to be meeting with the church to work on planning out the expansion of the community garden. Are there any questions, Commissioner Duckett?
No question.
Commissioner Hanchett?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Laught?
Questions?
All right. Okay, do we have anyone from CERT?
So I'll speak on CERT. For the month of December, they participated in two events, and they tallied up 360 hours of participation for the month of December, and that's it, and they're just ready for next year.
All right, questions, Commissioner Duckett? Alright, uh, questions, Commissioner Duckett?
No questions.
Commissioner Handchad?
Not at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Lot?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so Commissioner Reports, um, oh, I go first. So I have I think four things on my list here, so first of all, just with the COVID situation as it's been this um, Town Administrator Kyle Schneider and I moved Town Hall to a modified virtual schedule, so we don't have everyone in the office at the same time. Uh, that way, if a few people wind up getting sick, it doesn't take the whole government down. Also, I met with Denise Ross from the County Executive's Office, she's the municipal liaison, um, and we'll be chatting monthly so that we can be in communication about what's going on in the town, what our needs are from them, and what's going on in the county. I also was able to talk with Kathy Anderson, she is a resident and a local author. And she had approached me to kind of talk about the town's history. And as, as you guys probably know, I've been really interested in getting a comprehensive history of the town written for the town to, um, be able to put out there. And as she's an author, she volunteered to do some of this work. Um, she's gonna need the support of the town and the historic committee to make it happen. Uh, but it looks like that project is actually gonna be getting underway, which I am extremely excited about. Uh, and then I just also wanted to say that we have a volunteer appreciation event coming up on January twenty-second. That's going out via constant contact, so if you don't get an email and you're a volunteer in town by the end of the week, it's because we don't have your email, so contact us and let us know, so we can get you in that. Um, that's all I have, Commissioner Duckett?
Thank you, no word at this time.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Handchad?
Nothing at this time.
Commissioner Lot?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Alright, um, so we will, just again, a reminder, we will take public comment and questions on this during the regular public comment period at the end of the meeting, so just make a note. Uh, and we will move on to business. Uh, if you, while we're in a business item, if you have a comment, then just raise your hand, and once we are through the introduction, uh, Town Clerk Hodson will call on everyone in order for their three-minute comment period. Alright, so, we're gonna start with Resolution twenty twenty-two oh one, check signing authorization.
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero one, regular town meeting dated January fourteenth, twenty twenty. A resolution for the purpose of designating those persons in addition to the treasurer, who should be authorized to sign checks, certificates of deposit, and other bank instruments issued on behalf of the town when the need arises and the treasure is unavailable, and establishing the dollar amount above which all checks made payable by the town should be issued and signed by the treasurer and president, or to other persons designated herein, or which at least one is to be a commissioner.
So, um, Commissioner Duckett, do you have any questions or comments?
No.
Commissioner Handchad?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Lot?
No ma'am.
Okay, and just Kyle, can you do an overview of what we're actually approving here?
Absolutely, Mayor, uh, so this is a, um, normal resolution we pass after uh, an election, there's a changeover, so pretty much it establishes who's authorized to sign checks for the town of Upper Marlboro, um, there's four check signers, two primaries, two secondaries. So two being the, the mayor and the treasurer, so, uh, Mayor Franklin, Commissioner Duckett, and then the secondaries is one staff person, which is myself. And then, um, the, the fourth designated person would be Commissioner Handchad, so he can step up if needed to sign.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment? John?
I'm checking right now, one minute.
Okay, thank you.
We do not at this time.
Is there a motion, Stan?
I motion that we move to approve Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero one to authorize signers for the purpose, authorize signers for the purpose of signing town checks.
Thank you, is there a second?
Hi.
Okay, so
Hi.
Um, then, having a motion and a second, John, can you do a roll call vote for us?
I will. President Franklin?
Hi.
Commissioner Duckett?
Hi.
Commissioner Handchad?
Hi.
Commissioner Lot?
Hi.
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero one passes.
So we can move on to Resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh two, designation of residential speed areas. John, if you could read it, and then Kyle, you can give us an overview, and then we'll see if there's questions or comments.
Resolution twenty twenty-two oh two, regular special town meeting, January eleventh, twenty twenty-two. A resolution of the town of Board of Commissioners, designating residential districts along certain segments of certain Crane Highway and Old Marlboro Pike, MD seven twenty-five, for the deployment of speed monitoring systems within the corporate limits of the town of Upper Marlboro.
Sure, and, uh, ask John to go through the slides here, I think he's got pictures of the different speed zones, pretty much. Um, this goes with the ordinance we passed the other month, um, authorizing the town to put in place the residential speed zones that are authorized by the state legislation. As you can see, there's three, one Old Marlboro Pike, seven twenty-five between Spring Branch Drive and Elm Street. I think, yeah, the next one, John. Uh, the next one is Old Crane Highway between Maryland Route four and Church Street, if you go the next one. And then the last one is, um, seven twenty-five again, but between Governor and Blue Drive and, uh, Main Street Marlboro Pike, seven twenty-five, two of these areas are, um, currently outside the town limits, uh, but they will come in under phase two and three annexation here effective February eleventh. Um, so this authorizes the town to put speed cameras at, uh, these three locations. Did I miss anything, Chief?
Nope, not at this time.
Okay, do we have any questions or comments, Commissioner Duckett?
No comments, no questions.
Commissioner Handchad?
Not at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Lot?
No, not at this time, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Um, hearing no questions or comments, um, let's move on to the public comment portion of this. John, do you have any public comment?
I do not as of right now.
Okay, um, is there a motion?
I motion that we move to pr- to approve Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero two, designation of residential speed areas along Old Crane Highway and Maryland seven twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Hi.
Okay.
Hi.
John, with a, um, can you do a roll call vote for us, please?
Will do. President Franklin?
Hi.
Commissioner Duckett?
Hi.
Commissioner Handchad?
Hi.
Commissioner Lot?
Hi.
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero two passes.
Let's move on to Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero three, awarding road engineering firm contract. Uh, we discussed this, uh, during our closed session meeting, and I believe there is go, oh, well, let's have John read it, and then Kyle explain, and then we'll take comment.
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero three, session regular town meeting dated January eleventh, twenty twenty-two. A resolution of the Board of Town Commissioners of the town of Upper Marlboro to award a contract to provide roadway engineering services.
So this has been discussion for some time, the town released an RFP over the summer, we got three engineering firms to submit on, uh, providing engineering services to roadways and also doing a, a townwide road improvement study. Um, the three fir- or, uh, proposals reviewed, as the mayor mentioned, there was a closed session before this meeting, um, and I believe this is going to be tabled pending some additional information requested from some of the proposals, um, as you understand, this is a couple hundred thousand dollar proposal, some of these, so that it's something that the board doesn't wanna take lightly in deciding. Um, we have, um, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to spend on this project from the state. Um, as long as we spend some of it before, uh, June thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty-two, we're good to go, and that, that amount remains. Um, we also have fifty thousand dollars for that's coming out of the ARPA funding. So a half million dollar for, uh, engineering studies, and also on whatever construction we can do of roadways as well.
Um, as we discussed this just a little bit ago, I'm gonna just ask John if there's any public comments on it.
There is not at this time, from what I'm seeing.
Okay, um, do we have a motion to table this?
I motion that we move to table Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero three regarding the awarding of the road engineering firm contract.
I second, Aaron.
John, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, President Franklin?
Hi.
Commissioner Duckett?
Hi.
Commissioner Handchad?
Hi.
Commissioner Lot?
Hi.
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero three is tabled.
Uh, and we will either be calling a special meeting for this, if, um, timeliness needs us to address it sooner, or we will be voting on it at the February meeting. Uh, and we will provide notification either way.
President Franklin, I do have a hand, uh, from Brian Callicott.
Okay, can, it, can you, um, start the three minutes and we can hear the comment?
Will do. Okay, yeah, this should be quick, this is about the roads, I noticed Church Street isn't on there, yet there is a sinkhole which is extending onto the roadway, which I know you guys have been working on, so whatever, I, I know it's not part of this roadway work, but I saw in the notes that there was some sonar survey potential. I'm really interested in getting this problem resolved, since it's been over a year. Um, so is there anything that would be put into this project or another project to keep abreast of that problem?
I can answer that, Mayor, if you'd like, um, so yeah, so that part of its, uh, proposal is a survey of all the town roadways on with the sonar truck as needed, so we've identified Church Street with the, the sinkholes, um, and a couple of the firms are specialty in sinkhole investigations, um, which is what we're looking into, but yeah, the plan is to have a sonar truck driven over all the town roadways, and that would give us an idea of what's going on on Church Street. Um, and then based off the surveys that they can come through, we can start, um, figuring out what to do with that, or how severe it is, and, um, moving forward with scheduling of the, the project and the engineering plans for that.
Okay, I appreciate that, Tom, thank you.
Of course, yeah.
Thank you. Alright, shall we move on to Resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh four, town meeting regulation? John, you
Thank you. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero four, session regular town meeting introduced January the eleventh, twenty twenty-two. A resolution for the adoption of new rules of order and regulations for public meetings of the Board of Commissioners for the town of Upper Marlboro.
Kyle, can you do an overview?
Totally, um, so the town initially approved, uh, a resolution governing meeting regulations, um, back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Um, it was kind of quickly thrown in there and pushed through, so that the current commissioners, there's needs to tweak it based off of one virtual in blending meetings moving forward, um, two just adjusting it to, uh, to accommodate five elected officials versus three elected officials. Um, and then also swapping the meeting dates from, uh, the work session, the town meetings, so that the work sessions will be the second Tuesday, and the town meetings be the fourth Tuesday. Um, and it is a resolution, it's not getting approved tonight, it's just up for, uh, public input and introduction. We're treating it kind of like a resolution just because of, uh, the severity of, of what it carries, um, and the impacts it has on the public. So the board wanted to give it, um, all the public comment, uh, it needed, um, similar to an ordinance, so it's it's kind of lengthy document, you can go through it, and it's in track changes, so you can see the changes made for the, um, initial resolution to what's being proposed. I'm not gonna go through all the changes, but, but the public can see it.
Yeah, I will just comment that, basically, now that we have five commissioners, you know, when we vote, John can't tell who's voting, so we're doing this roll call voting, in, you know, trying to make sure everyone gets heard, and we don't want the meetings to go to ten o'clock, so this was one thing we brought back up, and we do want public comment on that, so I hope that there will be some, I'm gonna just run through the commissioners real quick, and then we'll take that. Commissioner Duckett, did you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, my comment is, yes, I'm, I'm glad that we have, uh, brought this back up, and I think that it will help our amazing meetings run a lot smoother and more efficient, so so I'm looking forward to these rules being put into place.
Thank you. Commissioner Handchad?
I'm in agreement, thank you.
Commissioner Lot?
I concur. Thank you.
Alright, John, I'm hoping you have public comment.
I do, I have, um, Joe Horclay as first, Joe?
Uh, number two dot eleven quorum, item E, there is a typo. Um, if conducting a virtual meeting or blending meeting, the, at least three, I assume should be then at least three. Um, you seem to have capitalized presiding officer in a whole lot of spots. Um, but some of the new changes do not capitalize it. Um, there's the notice for a meeting says town's website and social media outlets. Um, I don't know if that includes your constant contact or not, because they're normally not distributed that way, but it would be nice. Um, and there were some other things that I saw that I don't recall right now, oh yeah, the, uh, um, you refer to the president as the mayor in here, and I don't know if you wanna be consistent, I mean, yes, they can be called mayor, but, you know, they are officially the president. You know, they're, they occur as mayor, as president, and president slash mayor in different places throughout this document. And I guess I'll have to hold off the other ones for later, because I don't remember at this point.
I was clarified, you can also submit public comment, um, by emailing us as well, so. And then I'll, John, I'll let you get back to it.
Next, I have Patty Callicott, Patty?
Oops, sorry, hi, yes, um, just a couple of things, um, I was noting even while we're in this, in this meeting. Um, if we're unable to comment during the beginning, and then still are limited to only three minutes at the end, isn't that taking away the ability for the constituents to actually be able to speak on issues as they, uh, as they're being spoken about? That was one, um, the other one is, um, there is no chat, which if there was a chat, we would be able to address some of these in the chat itself, or at least it would be recorded that there were questions asked during the session, so I recommend maybe you wanna open up a chat session so that you can capture some of the questions. Third is, I looked on the town site this week, and I did not see any email addresses for the commissioners other than the mayor. So if we're supposed to email you guys, we kind of have to have an email address. And who specifically would we email? Do we email all, and then you guys divvy out who gets to answer that question? I mean, how is that gonna work? I'm not comfortable with emailing out questions when this is supposed to be a public forum. Um, and all citizens should hear the concerns of the constituents.
Okay, John, let's go through them all, and then we'll wrap them up, summarize them, okay, John?
Okay. You mean go through, what do you want me to do?
Are there more comments?
No, that's all I have.
Okay, um, so I'm just going to say with regards to the chat, that we did have a discussion about that at the last, um, meeting, and likened it to, you know, people chatting with each other in the room while there's a meeting. And so that was why we turned it off. And just to clarify on the comments, you have three minutes for each business item, and then again, three minutes at the end. Um, so I just wanna Um, so I just wanna make sure those things are clear. So I also have unifying president, mayor, Board of Commissioners and emailing and addressing residents' comments and questions. So I think I think that one is probably gonna have some tweaking as we go through. So let's see how it goes, and we will talk about it again at the work session.
And then also uh social media constant. We didn't list all the social media outlets, because it it changes so much. Um, but for constant contact, John does um when there's a meeting the next week, he does do it on the agenda, a copy of the agenda on constant contact. Sometimes just toward the bottom, we don't put it up front, because usually there's some other, like right now, the elections up top, I think, or something, or the snow event, but uh we do, we are trying to use constant contact more, because that is an email that goes out.
And also for email addresses, really the best thing, if you have a comment on town business, is to email info. Because that, then it can be distributed where the best answer is gonna go. But questions that get asked in a public meeting will get answered in a public meeting, just possibly not the same public meeting if it's a long answer.
It sounds like nothing's gonna be answered.
So we we are gonna answer questions. So, but right now, we're gonna take this public comment, because this isn't something we're voting on, and we're going to discuss it at the work session uh and then go forward from there. So we're gonna move on now to the town vaccine policy.
So this doesn't need to be read into the record, but I can give a quick overview, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, so this has been on the table for probably the past six months or so um with the vaccine policies of town. Um, thankfully is a hundred percent vaccinated with all its its staff, uh so that's really was not an issue for the town. Um, we're now putting it forward as we look to hire more police officers and whatnot um and and bring on additional staff possibly in the future. Um, we just wanna make sure we have a policy in place ready to go. So this is based off of some other municipalities' feedback and also um current CDC recommendations and whatnot. Um, I don't know if there's anything in general, but pretty much it it puts in place the the vaccine policy. There's as of, because there's no uh uh exceptions right now with staff. Everyone's vaccinated. That that's not in here. If I can answer any questions from the board.
Are there any questions, Commissioner Duckett?
Oh, yes, I do have some questions, only because there are few things that are uh it stills to seem to be pending in here that I think that we covered a while back. And so I just want to um point out that if we are requesting employees to have um, so in section three, so so just in case anyone wants to follow along. So in area three, where we're asking that employees be vaccinated and show proof of vaccination, like on a daily basis, um, that's understood. But what I'm not clear on is the part where employees will not be permitted to attend in-person training events or participation, participate in other job-related activities involving travel. So that one, uh, for me, I'm just thinking if we're already requiring them to prove, show proof that if they're not vaccinated, that they've already given us what we've asked, and we could not impose this on them and say, you can't participate, you can't do this because you're not vaccinated. We've already requested that they show proof of that vaccination on a weekly or daily basis. I think this is or or at another weekly interval approved by by the unvaccinated employee, so or the supervisor. So if they're providing this on a weekly or daily basis that they're vaccinated, then I don't know that we could actually say employees will not be eligible to receive additional sick leave. You know, because if you're actually out, you're using your own PTO when you're out sick. And that doesn't mean that you can't continuously accrue PTO. If that makes sense. And then, so that's five. And then number six, employees will not be eligible for promotion. Like, we can't technically say that we are not going to allow you to be that you not back being vaccinated is going to affect you being promoted. So it's saying that we're gonna take your work performance and penalize you and say you cannot be promoted because you have not been or you have not shown proof of vaccination. Well, I'm just saying, if they do all these things, then they still are able to receive these to be qualified for these areas is what I wanna say. So I I'm just not comfortable with employees will not be eligible for promotion because they've already provided this proof that they're vaccinated or that they are cleared for that week. If we're saying that you need to be cleared every week to show vaccination or every day, then you're already giving us what we've asked you to show, and that's the proof. So we can't turn around and say, well, you can't be promoted, and then you can't attend in-person trainings, because we're asking them to show proof and they showed. So I have concern about that. Plus, I know that the Supreme Court is looking at this, but they haven't made a complete decision on whether or not people will be, and it's supposed to be coming up, whether or not people could be ac- actually be or employees could actually be fired for not having vaccination. So I'm just not fully sold on some of this verbiage down here. I just wanna hear more thoughts about that.
So I can uh clarify. So for the those of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, so that's kind of not really applicable to our situation, because all our our employees are fully vaccinated. That's kind of like an extra coverage section if someone did sneak through or something. But because everyone's covered, we don't have any partially vaccinated people that that section would apply to. It's kind of a a moot point, so we could just remove it all. Um, but we kind of kept that that language in there just in case um something happened or something like that. There was something weird with people's vaccine status.
I think, Kyle, sorry, that vaccine status could change related to boosters over.
Exactly. Thank you. Yeah, so if a booster does become required for fully vaccinated, that's when that would kick in.
So we do need to work out which verbiage is staying and which verbiage going.
Because it says uh partially vaccinated employees may be allowed to remain employed with the town past January first with the following conditions, and then it lists those nine conditions. So that those only apply for partially vaccinated employees, which we don't have right now.
Well, could we had adverbage in it? It says like pending these following points or these following areas, this will you know, but I I'm still not comfortable with employees will not uh be eligible for promotions, because uh, if if we're requiring that employees be vaccinated in order to work for the town, that's one thing. I understand that. But I think now, since we don't have this situation, and even if in the future employees, that, you know what I'm saying? We wouldn't hire anyone anyway that's not qualified to work with the town and be fully vaccinated. So it kind of makes me wonder why are we adding these areas in here between four and six at least?
I think definitely five is like, because there's extra sick leave. If you are sick with COVID, you get extra sick leave in addition to your regular sick.
Well, I thought FICRA was done with, like FICRA is was over as of last year sometime, I thought, in like October, November. Do we not, FICRA was the federal government allowing uh employees to receive that ten days if they were to contract COVID. And now that is no longer an option, that is obsolete. So there's no more FICRA. And then employees, if they're sick with COVID, they have to use their own PTO. Maybe federal government, and I don't know what the government, I'm just saying, like in that area, but I know they did issue FICRA.
Oh, sorry. That's actually covered in the directive. I think that's what Kyle's getting ready to say. So the directive that we're under right now, because of the state of emergency and the situation right now, gives extra leave in it. But the whole board needs to see and approve the directive. We're just under it because we needed something right away. So this ties into that and possible changes to that directive. Once everyone's looking at it, which I think is on the work session for January.
Yeah, that's correct, Mayor. So the, back when COVID first started, the the sitting board at the time um approved a set of guidelines, the town's response to COVID, and in that, the town provided two weeks sick leave to employees who contracted COVID. So it wasn't a federal, I guess, the the federal version, they used to go, that's what the, this is our version of the federal government's response to that. Town internally would give two weeks vacay or two weeks sick leave to people who um submitted proof of a positive COVID test. So that is currently standing, and we're looking to update the directive, as the mayor mentioned, with some additional testing. But that part, the older part of the response was approved by the board in the standing, but we're looking to uh change it to include some testing and exposure stuff um and just improve it a bit as we move forward, which is what the mayor mentioned. So uh, the employees, yeah, they do get COVID, that they're not eligible for the the two weeks additional sick leave. Um, but like you mentioned, everyone's fully vaccinated, so we don't have any partially vaccinated employees unless the the booster kicks in, and that's where those sections would come into play.
Yeah, I'm still there on the employees will not be eligible for the promotion part, but I mean
No, I I as well, I do think that's an area that we should probably more so look into for the for the town. Um i- it's kind of tough to kind of put the two together based off of somebody's per- job performance. Uh, what they add to the department um that we're not, won't be able to, I guess, promote to promote them to a higher positioning, because they're not uh, they personally have their reasonings for not getting vaccinated. Um, but they are still sticking to the mandate uh that the town, the policy of the town has in effect as to getting uh the weekly uh testing. So um, I do think that it might be an area that we might want to take or investigate, I guess, a little bit further to see if that's the right decision, decision to do.
Yeah, I'm just kind of thinking about um like, you know, making sure that we're not putting ourselves in a situation that we get, you know, liabilities is what I'm thinking about.
Yeah. I mean, do we wanna strike items for in six, or do we wanna discuss it further?
We can discuss it further. I'm open to that. We need to.
I mean, we could put it into the work session with the discussion on the directive, since they kind of pull into each other. I know that staff really wants to know um whether we're requiring vaccination or not, but I think we can kind of say that we're more ca- we're more in the weeds on the specifics of it, not on the general topic right now. Commissioner Hanchet, do you have any comments on that?
Um, I just don't think it's an issue, because everyone's vaccinated in town. Um, I I honestly don't see how it really could become an issue unless we hire someone that's against it, but in my life, I haven't come across I just think it's a almost like a non-issue right now.
Um, just like background, there are a lot of um, people leaving government jobs as vaccine policies are going into place, because they don't want to comply with them. So people who are gonna be looking and applying for our jobs going forward may not be vaccinated. So that's actually why we wanted to go forward with it. So it's it's like a non-issue right now, but we need to hire and expand the.
But um, um, I almost think that we should cross that bridge when we get to it. And I mean, not necessarily not be prepared, but I just don't see a point of dwelling on it right now. It's if it's a hot issue, like we need to figure out how.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, we just, we have a job posted, I think, for events coordinator right now as well. Oh, though I'm not sure if it's waiting on this to be posted, waiting on us to approve this or not to be posted. So if we don't have this and we hire an events coordinator and they're not vaccinated, then we have a problem.
Can I just say, um, Mayor, that um OSHA is coming out with a our a new workplace uh requirement. I think that's due to come out sometime this week, tomorrow or later on this week. And I think that we should consider what OSHA has to say as far as the uh, you know, work safety um for employees. And I think we should look at that and see and see what burdens they have and kind of make a decision once we see what they um outline for the workplace.
I agree with that.
It sounds like I just need a motion to table this.
Um, yes, that's table.
Um, let's just check if there's any public comment first before we table it, John?
Yes, we do have a comment from Joe Horclay. Joe?
Uh, yes, two things. Um, if the issue is the CDC changing the definition of what fully vaccinated is, you will probably need to change item seven, because it wouldn't s- s- it wouldn't be specifically beyond February twenty-eighth. It would be beyond sometime after the definition is changed. Um, and you may wanna say fully, you know, make a distinction between this is you know, not fully vaccinated. I don't, it just basically, there's the argument of what exactly unvaccinated means in number seven. So partially vaccinated versus fully vaccinated. That one's problem. Um, the other one is number one says we'll be required to wear a KN ninety-five. Uh, KN ninety-five is a self-reported standard, which they may not actually qualify, and it's there are equivalent standards such as N ninety-five, and I forget what the one is out of Korea. But you may wanna say, you know, at least this, you know, this were better, or this were equivalent, because there may be something better that they can wear while doing their duty.
Thank you, John. Anyone else?
That is it?
Is there a motion to table?
A motion that we move to table town vaccination policy.
Motion second, John, can you do a roll call vote?
President Franklin. Commissioner Duckett. Commissioner Hanchet. Commissioner Lot. The town staff vaccination policy is tabled.
Let's move on to the town events calendar. Kyle, can you go over this for us?
So the events committee and the town's working together just so we can pre-plan and plan for staff hours and whatnot, and the advertising of of all the events, the town's forecasting to see um for the twenty twenty-two calendar year. Um, as you can see, we have everything uh February, March, pretty empty, but uh the summer months really open up. Um, so I know the events committee uh communicated with a bunch of different committees. Um, and I just wanted to confirm with the historic, while we have them here, that that September thirtieth is the Old Crane Highway Memorial Centennial. That's what's on the the posted town hall. Um, or the picture at town hall. So I just wanna confirm that with the date for the store committee. And if there's a memories and morsels on Main Street, you guys are planning.
Um, yeah, this is Patty. We probably are, will have a memories and morsels. Um, we normally do it in May, but we will, considering the day that Marlboro Day is, mo- most likely do it in June. Um, probably the day after Father's Day instead of the day after Mother's Day, um and we'll probably have another one in September. Um, we also uh coordinate our events with the town events, um such as um Cruze and Maine and uh any of the other town events that where we can um open up a a tent.
And the thirtieth is the uh, September thirtieth is the Old Crane Highway?
That is, that is correct. Um, I believe I've reached out to the events committee um, because this should be a big event, and if we wanted to do as the historical committee suggested and try to reenact that picture that is hanging in the town hall, um, that's a big event, and it should have already started being planned.
But we do have a meeting this Saturday, if anyone is interested to talk about it.
Yes, I will say that the events committee is going to be extremely focused on Marlboro Day um for the next several months. Um for the next several months, uh they do know you would like their assistance with that event.
This this is a hundred year event, just saying.
Right, and and there's just four people on the events committee, so, you know, we just have to. We have to plan the one and then shift to planning the other. If you want to attend one of their meetings, they are on uh the first Thursday at seven o'clock. Uh so you can come to the meeting and discuss with them what you're looking for and what kind of. Help you need, that would help them know how best to support you.
Who who is in charge of the events committee?
So Sharna Graham is in charge of the events committee and there are uh three other. Committee members that are dedicated to that, of course, we are also looking at getting an events coordinator who will help with all of this once they are in.
Okay, because the last time I sent anything to the events committee, it went unanswered.
Okay.
Email not a good email, the events committee's email not a good email?
Um, I think, because I, so I think Kyle is managing that email, so I, maybe we can forward. That Kyle can find that and forward that on.
No, I I can't contact somebody if I don't have their email address, just saying.
Yeah, so I'm just, I'm asking Kyle to forward your email on to Sharna, because I can't can't give her personal email address out. Without permission.
I'm monitoring the box till the uh the events coordinator side will pass it over to them. Uh because Anita monitored it, and when she left it, it kind of went unmonitored a little bit, so I forwarded it to myself, so I've been keeping. So I think yours uh email came before I started monitoring Patty, but. Yeah, if you just email the events or email me, um I can get that over, we'll get everything set up.
Um, Janice, I don't know if you had someone from the events or the Arts Council. I don't see anyone at the meeting, and basically the events committee selected selected dates. For the two events we had heard the Arts Committee might want to do. Do you have any input on that?
No, I've reached out to the chair to um find out if those dates would work for them. Um I know they were actually planning dates, but um I haven't received back any reply from her, so um. I can't tell you what's currently there is is what they did discuss, though, which is the Happy Art Festival as well as. Think it was one more thing, but the two things that I saw are topics of discussion. I just don't know if they want to stick with that time frame.
Okay.
Um there is a meeting, so and and I did send her an email, so I will give an update as soon as I hear from her.
Um, I guess I'm thinking we might need to table this. Do we need to vote to table these approval things that? John?
I think it's a good idea, just so that we have an official record.
Okay, um, let's just see.
Have a public comment from someone.
Okay, let's get Commissioner Hanchet and Commissioner Lot, and then we'll go to comment. Commissioner Hanchet?
Yes.
Do you have any?
I do not, no, now's the time.
Okay, Commissioner.
No questions, but I agree that we should table this and kind of get a better understanding.
All right, um, let's have our public comment.
Joe Horclay?
Uh, yes, I'm wondering what the volunteer appreciation event is and will it be socially distant because. Three days before the election and having a major spread would really suck.
So it is actually just a pickup event, pick up a lunch event, and that is. Um, that invitation was just finalized today, so it should be going out probably tomorrow, I think.
Okay, and and your calendar should probably also have that we have a special election on the twenty fifth.
Okay, yeah, that will be passed when we vote on it. All this January will be passed when we vote on it, so we're not gonna. Stress about that right now, I think. Just because we're gonna vote on it in February, Joe. Okay. Any other comments?
There are none that I see. Oh, wait, I have Patty Calacott.
Okay.
Yeah, I I'm just asking, is this only, are you only asking about this calendar, or is this, are you opening the forum?
So at the end of every meeting, there is a public comment period. Um so right now, we're just going through business, and then at the end, that's open forum for all general public comments. And we just wanna, we really want to get everyone home before ten o'clock at night, that's why we're doing this.
Yeah, I thought you said that already.
So, yes, so um, do I have a motion to table?
So, a motion that we um table uh the town event calendar approval.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, John, can you do a roll call vote?
President Franklin.
Hi.
Commissioner Duckett.
Hi.
Commissioner Hanchet.
Hi.
Commissioner Lot.
Hi.
The town event calendar is tabled.
Thank you. So let's move on to mural artist selection.
Oh, man, these are so cute.
They are. Um, Kyle or John, I'm not sure which one of you should present this.
Kyle.
Yeah, sorry. So that's um, and Commissioner Duckett, um feel free to jump in, but pretty much uh the Arts Council has taken. As you can see in the packet, they've taken the uh the public input. Um and selection, their internal discussions as well, and they forwarded their recommendations of the artists of the two sites. Um forward to the board for just a a a final stamp of approval. Um so that they can uh alert the artists that they've been awarded and they can begin the process to apply for the implementation grant. From the Maryland State Arts Council, because right now we only have a planning grant. Um but the implementation grant, one for each of these sites, would help uh allow us to actually put these murals in place. But we just have to uh formally approve the the murals, um and because the town's assisting the. Arts Council and putting its name on the uh documentation for the proposals and the um. Grant submissions, that's why we just want to bring before the board. Um, to adopt the Arts Council's recommendation. Did I get everything, Commissioner Duckett, you think?
Yes, she did, you did, thank you.
Then, I guess, I. Do we have comments from Commissioner Hanchet?
Not at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Lot?
Yes, he's a beautiful and um, yes. Very nice, very colorful.
They are really nice. All right. This, then is there a motion to approve these?
Oh, I have a public comment from Evelyn.
Thanks, John.
No worries, no worries.
I got excited about the art.
Evelyn?
Okay, I'm having a trouble time. Uh, I'm meeting, uh my question, I think the um work is beautiful. However, I'm a little concerned because I don't see any diversity. Uh, and I'm a big, uh if you know me, you know I'm a big proponent of diversity. So, does the artist have the choice to change uh pictures? Like, in this one that I'm seeing right now, we have two African Americans, I see another one, we have four African Americans. Uh, do we have uh opportunity, does the town have opportunity to make changes? To show diversity?
Well, I will say that the town did put this out for voting, so that everyone did have an opportunity to have input. Um, I do understand your point, but it was based on the. The consensus of the town, and this is not a board decision, i- in in terms of the board selecting specific photos. It it didn't happen that way, it was the artists submitting their um mural presentations, and then. We actually gave the town an opportunity to vote on those uh, I remember, I did vote. I didn't vote on that.
Great, great.
How many, how many of the town people voted? Um, I think uh we have the the uh numbers here.
Two eighty five.
Two eighty, thank you, Thomas. Hundred, so half the town voted, a little less than half the town, you would say?
Um, if I can just.
A little less than half. I mean, I I think the work is beautiful, I'm I'm just saying. Um, is the, I'm I'm only asking, and it's not, you know, you know, a big deal, but. Is it an opportunity for the artists to, is is this what's going, what we're going to see?
So in the memo, actually, um, it says that. To better reflect Upper Marlboro's diverse population, Upper Marlboro's Arts Council recommend the artists revise their design to show a greater diversity of race and age.
Love it.
And they are, um, once these artists are selected, it does go, they are gonna ask. Um, we have a bit more money in the budget for the planning side, so that the arts. I do believe the Arts Council is gonna ask them to kind of refine their design now that it was awarded um before it goes to the to the um final grant process, so.
Thank you so much, that's that's, pleases me, great. Yeah, and I did say, and I should have said, which I did see other, some others with that type of, with the diversity that you mentioned. So it was age, it was, um, yeah, all of that, so, yeah. Okay, very good, thank you.
Thanks for asking.
Uh, are there any other public comments?
Um, I do have Joe Horclay.
Okay.
Uh, yes, in the um, the one with the four children, in her mural proposal, she actually says. In the foreground, there are portraits of four children, the children seen in my design are placeholders for models from the community. Who represent the hope and future of Upper Marlboro. So she actually has plans to replace those. So I don't know if it needs to be a call specifically for children from the community to be in the mural.
Anyone else, John?
That is all I have on the public side.
All right, um, now, we we can have a motion to vote on it.
A motion that we move to to approve mural artist, the mural artist selection.
I second.
Okay, uh, John, can you roll?
President Franklin.
Hi.
Commissioner Duckett.
Hi.
Commissioner Hanchet.
Hi.
Commissioner Lot.
Hi.
The mural artist selections is approved.
Now, we can move on to the last business item on the agenda, and that is the board priorities. Um, we did this last year around the budget season. Um, and this year, we wanted to put something together as soon as everyone was in, and we were talking about it. So these are the priorities we discussed at the work session. Um, are there any comments, Commissioner Duckett?
No comment.
Commissioner Hanchet?
Not at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Lot?
No comment.
Okay, um, do we have public comment on priorities?
Not at this time, from what I'm seeing.
Bummer, okay.
Oh, wait, I do now.
Okay.
Charles? Good evening, um, yes, good evening, um, I just had one question about four priority number four, the economic development. I'm wondering if that's in, um, I I know that's a broad topic, but I'm wondering specifically if that's having to do with some of the. Uh vacant buildings, a lot that are that are.
I think the question was about vacant buildings, and that's definitely something that we were discussing at the work session when we came up with this topic.
Okay, yes, that that was specifically what it was, I just wanted to make sure that 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 was folded.
Okay. Yeah, you come in and out, so I think, I think you said that we covered it. Um. Is there any more public comment?
Yes, I have Joe Horclay, Joe?
Uh, yes, also on the economic development thing, um, back when I was a commissioner, I was trying to put something into the. Uh procurement policy, saying that, you know, look, if it's a county business, we're willing to spend a little bit more. And I don't know if that would be worth amending that policy to say, you know, look, we're willing to pay a, you know, five or ten percent premium, or. You know, some sort of premium for supporting local businesses, we're not just gonna go with the lowest bid.
I'm just writing this down. Uh, any other comments, John?
I have.
Okay, right, is there a motion to approve these priorities? When they're broad.
A motion that we move to approve board priorities. Uh for twenty twenty two slash twenty twenty three for the Board of Town Commissioners.
Is there a second?
I second.
I second.
All in favor? Uh, oh, sorry, sorry, dot roll call vote.
President Franklin.
Hi.
Commissioner Duckett.
Hi.
Commissioner Hanchet.
Hi.
Commissioner Lot.
Hi.
Board priorities for twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three passes.
Okay, uh, so that is the regular business, so we're gonna move on to administrative updates, and then we'll get into. General items and then public comment on any general topic.
And I'll just uh, I'll run through this, Mayor, I'm gonna touch on um all of them, just the big ones that we've seen uh big improvements on. Um, so the automated speed enforcement um is big one, we just passed the resolution for residential speed, um. The board will be discussing the red light camera destination of a couple intersections at the work session for with approval at the February. Town meetings, so keep an eye out for that, um grant coordinator, visitor, grant administrator position that we have, um, we have that grant with uh. More into the town of Morningside, um, we did get awarded it, we're moving forward with it, we're giving the okay about the state to hire, so we're working on job descriptions. We'll be having some meetings with uh the town of Morningside to make sure they all line up and uh figure out the hiring process, but the towns, the. The uh the sponsors will be doing the bulk of that. Um, election process review, working with the board supervisors to update the town's election procedures, I know uh. The board supervisor elections have some policies already up in place um that they wanted to move forward, so uh moving that forward with the board. Road improvements, we touched on, uh the pocket park has been purchased and is ours. If it was a building, it, they'd be giving us keys uh this week, but there's no, nothing, um, so we just get a vacant lots, we'll be working forward with the uh. Designing of that, how we want to move forward with that, and also getting the drawdown from the state as that was purchased through a state grant. Um, annexations passed in effect on the eleventh. Um, the fiscal year's coming up, so you'll be seeing, uh, I know requests are going out to the, all the committees to have uh. Some budget requests submitted um to the town by March first, so that they can be considered. Um, but you'll be seeing a budget planning calendar coming out, um, so everyone knows the the places to input, um public comments. And all that for the budget cycle, uh meeting procedures, we talked about. Uh, the draft was discussed at the December work session, possible vote at the February town meeting. And then um also just to structure government as we move to the five-person board, um, I know that the board's looking to uh. Start some discussions um regarding the structure, um, so you'll be seeing some discussions and work sessions, but I don't think any. Um charter amendments or anything are on the horizon just yet. Um, obviously, there's a lot of discussions to be had for that, so. Um, I can take any questions from commissioners.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Duckett?
No question.
Commissioner Hanchet?
Not at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Lot?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, um, you're gonna discuss the election thing and then, under the next item, Kyle?
Uh, I think it's, yeah, later in the uh.
General.
Slides, yeah, um.
Sorry, um, okay, I just wanted to check that first, we're gonna take public comment on this item. Sorry, um, okay, I just wanted to check that first. We're gonna take public comment on this item before we move on to general commissioner and staff items. Go ahead, John.
Uh, Patty Calacott, Patty.
Um, so I see this cute little playground sitting up at the town. Is it open? Can the kids go play on it? Is there, I see a gate around it, but. I'm sure if I was three or four or five and saw that playground there, and it was sixty-five degrees outside like it was a week ago, I'd like to play in it. Um, is there a plan to open up the playground?
That's correct, we're still fine. So the, the playground structure itself got finished a lot sooner than we thought, um, they weren't anticipating. Being able to fully complete it until spring. Um, but we had a couple days of seventy, eighty degree weather in December and they were able to, the form place. Um, because that's a certain temperature required, so it got finished ahead of schedule. We're waiting on a pathway. Need, they're, right now, it's kind of just sitting in the middle of the grass field, um, so the gate is locked, there's a sign up saying, sorry, the playground's closed right now. Um, it is now fully insured, that was another thing we were waiting on. But we're also waiting on the perimeter fence, um, just because of its proximity to, uh, Old Crane Highway, even though it has that central. Fence right around the, um. Playground itself, we're putting a perimeter fence around a second layer, so no one runs into Old Crane Highway. So, uh, once we get the fence up and then the path in place, um, we're probably, that's discussions we're having now actually is, uh. We'll probably do a soft opening of just that playground while Phase Two and the splash pad are built. Um, and we're working with the playground firm now, so that. How can we have construction of Phase Two in the splash pad while keeping that play structure open?
I, I'm just saying, I would be going, mommy, mommy, mommy. And, 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 and you guys are just like, no, no.
I know, yeah, we're the mean ones, but hopefully, uh, we're waiting on long fence and some quotes for fencing.
I just keep telling everybody it's Sarah's fault.
But, uh, then, they finished it a lot earlier than we thought, which is great, but on the other hand, it's like, oh, well now we're, not, all the other items are in place, so. We're looking for more updates on that over the next couple months, we'll have that plan updated.
John, do we have any other public comment?
That is it.
Okay. All right, so let's go to general commissioner and staff items. Kyle, do you wanna go first? Do you want me to let commissioners go first?
Um, I can go first. I'll pull the, uh, the salt spreader issue up first and, and pull Darnell into that, um. As you know, we had a snow event, um, we have an extra salt spreader and Darnell's requesting to better, um, handle. Uh, he's asking for twenty-five hundred dollars to repair the old salt spreader and mounted to the stake body, but I'll let him. Go into discussion on that.
All right, uh, hello again, um, actually, uh, the actual quote is, uh, two thousand five hundred and two. Just to be, uh. Just to make sure that, uh, we're covering everything here. Um, basically, uh, we're wanting to do this, um, simply because, uh. As we were transitioning in, transitioning it to, uh. Sort of put to the side for, uh, use or to be fixed at a later date. We actually saw how well it fit on the, on the, um, stake body that we were using. Uh, to move it. Um, the other, uh, portion of that is during the storm, uh, on the third. We had, uh, truck two fifteen go down and the Kubota tractor. Now, with, um, the incoming annexation happening, uh, next month. And this seeming to start off as a. Sort of active winter for us, um, just making sure that we have. Uh, another backup in the event that our main truck or our main spreader goes down. The only thing as of right now that we would have as a backup is truck two fifteen that only has a tailgate spreader. Um, with how active things seem to be, uh, that, that's just not gonna cut it and, um. We, we're, we're gonna be in a sort of dire, uh, position if something does happen. And also with the delay of the larger F six fifty, uh, dump truck that won't be here until probably. Very late winter, early spring. Um, yeah, we, we're definitely needing something in the interim. Uh, truck, uh, zeros or three, which is the stake body, already has a very large plow on it. It's larger than the, um. Than the plows that we currently use on our pickup trucks by foot. Um, the only thing that it actually is missing is the spreader and with the, uh. With the old spreader, with the barn doors, uh, that are at the top of it, with the enclosed bed of the truck. And the dual, uh, rear axle of the truck that we're proposing to put it on, it actually increases the salt capacity. Uh, when being used with that truck. Um, as of right now, it's a two point five cubic yard. Um, on the pickup trucks, we've put as much as three cubic yards. The truck wasn't happy about it, but we could prob, with, but with this truck, we could probably. Increase to three point five cubic yards, which is a whole nother cubic yard more than the current new spreader that we have now. Um, just to sort of put that in perspective, what we have now, we'll probably do all of the town streets twice. Um, before we have to go back and pick up more salt, depending on. How much, uh, we actually have to melt off. Um, with using that truck, that could probably do all of the town streets and the majority of the annexed area as well. And, uh, with that truck, we can use that in the event that we have. Another situation where our main roads that are county and state owned. Um, where they're not passable, we could actually put that truck since it's larger on our main roads and, uh, assist with that as well. Um, if there are any other questions on that, I'll be glad to take those.
Yeah, I'm gonna push to the other commissioners for questions, cause I got to ask you my questions about this on Friday. So, Commissioner Duckett, do you have questions or comments?
No, I'm pretty aware, I have no questions, thank you.
Commissioner Hanchet?
Not at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Lot?
No questions.
Okay.
When can we, uh, one question, sorry, when, when? Do we have the money in the budget and can we, can we actually afford to do this?
Will, you, you and Darnell talked about this today.
We, we actually, uh, did not talk about it, however, uh, looking at the updated budget that I have. We could, there's two different line items where this could be pulled, as long as, uh, you know, Will. Thinks it's a good idea and it's approved.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Will, can you just let us know? Your thoughts on this? Is Will still here? Oh, he is.
I'll text him if you want to take public.
Okay, yeah, let's take public comment on this. John, do we have any?
Yes, we do. Patty Calacott, Patty.
Hi, um, when he says town roads, he is not meaning Main Street. Seven twenty-five, Old Crane Highway, which are state and county roads. He is only discussing the town roads, is that correct?
So, um, we're talking about town roads, but we're also talking about the fact that. Um, on Monday, actually, on the Mon, during the Monday storm event. No county or state truck showed up until Tuesday, um, and. The fact is, our residents need to move around on those roads, um. So, and so we had to help them move around or just. Leave everyone stranded on the main roads because the county.
The town, does the county and state reimburse you for your equipment and your, um, your, your salt and all of that?
Right, that's something that we've been discussing internally.
We actually get our salt from the state at a, at a reduced rate.
Well, if they're not gonna, if they're not gonna do our town, we should get it for free, huh?
Right, so.
Things are, are a little different, but I, I, I confirm.
So, uh, we are internally discussing that, um, at the same time, we are in a situation where. While we're discussing it, we could have a number of residents. Um, who are elderly or otherwise need to get out for. Certain situations and they could be stuck in their homes because of the situation, so that's why we're considering this this evening.
I, I'm just saying that.
Yeah, I, I agree.
We should not be paying to clean state and county roads, that is not in our budget to do that. And I think that.
It may not be in the budget, but if it needs to happen and we need to get around. I don't wanna be stuck in the town if I have to go to work or whatever.
Then put it in the budget. It's not necessarily a budgeted item because it's not something that we normally have to do.
Um, and we are, uh, mending the budget in the next. In the next town meeting, um, we aren't trying to take this on as a regular situation. It's a situation of being able to handle something like this happening again because. Monday was a mess, I mean, like, my husband and I were out here with salt pulling, getting people unstuck. Uh, on Old Crane Highway, there were branches down, you couldn't move, um. So, we need to be able to. Supplement for our residents, so I don't, we're gonna plan to budget to.
Or work with the county and the state to take care of those roads as they should be. This is a county town. And the county has a courthouse here, who has a lot of people coming through the town using our roadways. And they should be maintaining it. Our town should not have to.
Has this ever happened before?
No, usually. Going by, um, regularly.
And so I think that our town needs to find out what happened.
So since this is not something that normally happens, um, I think that that's why it wasn't budgeted. But now that we know it can possibly happen, maybe we can find, um. Uh, another option, like seeing as they will help with certain, um. You know, help with, uh, help with supplies or whatever, but. It, I find it necessary, I don't wanna be stuck and if I have to go to work or if I have to go to the grocery store, and I think that the guys did a fine job, thank you.
I'm not arguing that they didn't do a good job, I'm arguing that we are spending our town's resources on county and state roads and we are not being reimbursed. And that, that maybe the commissioners need to speak with the state and the county to find out what happened. That they were unable to get to this town for twenty-four hours.
Just happened on Monday, so maybe if we get the commissioners an opportunity to act on that suggestion, maybe that's the best route to go. Since this is a new situation, is not regu, that does not regularly.
Okay, so hold on, just, um, I wanna keep us in our public commenting rules and I think we've probably. John, are we over our three minutes?
We are on that one.
Okay, so, what we're gonna do is, the comment is that we should be communicating with the state and the county. To make sure this doesn't happen again, rather than spending town resources. On this, so that comment has come into us and we're going to go to the next comment.
I have Joe Horclay.
Yes, I, I, I know that we have assisted them in maintaining the, the county and state roads before. I don't believe that we've entire, you know, been responsible for doing all of the clearing though, but, uh. Thank you to Public Works because I know, uh, a few of my neighbors and I dug out another one of our neighbors who had to. Go and get her medications, so, thank you.
And, uh, just a quick clarification on the salt spreading, um. So when Darnell mentioned the streets, he did mean all the town streets, um, we do not salt state and county streets unless it's like an, or we have someone stuck. Or an emergency situation type thing. Um, we only put salt down on the town streets. Now, they do have the plows down as they go from town street to town street. Um, on the state and county roads, but we're not expending resources, um. But I just wanted to clarify that, I texted Darnell to, to check that, so.
Thank you, Kyle. Um, are there any other public comments?
Hand up again, Patty.
Well.
I apologize, I, I believe there was a question, uh, directed to myself in, in regards to finance, I apologize, I had a, oh, uh. Issue in the house that I had to step away from my computer from, so I know we may have moved on from that question or, or that comment.
We want an answer.
It was my question, uh, my question was, um, do we have, um, enough money in the budget to move forward with the request? Of the Public Works Department to get the, uh, the, uh, truck on the road. Salt spreader, sorry.
Um, yeah, yes, we do, yes, we do, um, I did speak with, uh, Darnell and the mayor in our last, uh, meeting that we had, uh, with the team. Uh, we do have enough money in, in the budget, uh, to re. Either in or repay, I believe it was to, uh, acquire a brand new one to put on one of our trucks that just has right now, I guess it just has a plow. Um, if I, uh, am correct in speaking, so yes, there is enough money within the. Uh, to, for that, and partly of the, uh, reasoning is because we are able to, uh. More so use some of our resources from the American Rescue Plan money to supplement and or substitute things within the budget to free up some.
Mm-hmm, twenty-five hundred dollars.
So. Can you mute that, please, because we're trying to listen to Will? Um, and, and the commission is gonna discuss this again, um, so.
I'm sorry, I was muted as well, just, just to answer that question, yes, there is funds within the budget to fu, uh, to make this purchase happen. And, uh, a part of what you will see in the, uh, budget amendment in the following month. Uh, you'll see some of the areas where we may, uh, where we have adjusted things on the expense side, uh, to make this transaction happen.
So, well, cause Will, it sounded like you were talking about the new spreader, but Darnell is actually requesting in addition to the new spreader that we fix the old spreader.
Now, is that the cost for the twenty-five hundred?
So it's twenty-five hundred, I think we paid for the new spreader and then I think it's another twenty-five hundred to fix the old spreader.
So the, the, the new spreader has already been ordered, it's already been in use, this is the twenty-five hundred. For, uh, to fix and attach, uh, the wiring harness and all that to the.
Would you say it was twenty-five oh two, Darnell?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, eh, I apologize, I, I probably said it incorrectly, but myself and Darnell, we did speak about that, uh, as he mentioned, as far as the ordering and the invoice and that. Was something, uh, for the, the new spreader, that was something that already came in, that's already affected in our budget and or the, uh, budget. Actual, uh, reports that we have, um, but any new transactions was more so what I was, uh, speaking of.
Okay, okay, so I just am going to, like, re. Restart this and ask Darnell some questions, just to clarify things, so. Um. The first question is, like, and I think Kyle was trying to clarify this is. So you're, this, what's gonna happen with that vehicle? Is that when you go along Old Crane Highway, because you're going from school lane to church street. You're gonna put the plow down, but you're not gonna be spreading salt. And then, when you get to church street, you're gonna be spreading salt and flour. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, um, and that will be the same on all kind of county roads, which is something you guys usually do in the smaller trucks, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um. The other question is, um, how are we going to? Secure the spread, this spreader, cause we were going to fix it eventually, but we wanted to have a place to keep it out of the elements, so how are we going to address that issue?
We, to, we, pretty much it would be stored, uh, in the very next bay, um, in the overhang. Uh, right next to where it was, um, it was a lot easier to just move it, uh, outside and we didn't think that we were going to fix it. To make room, uh, for the new spreader, but, uh, now that we're, um, now that. We're hoping that it'll be fixed while it's at the shop giving, uh, everything it needs, we can make space for it in the very.
And then I guess my third question, and then we'll go through the commissioners again. And then I guess my third question, and then we'll go through the commissioners again, is so when you have, if this is fully outfitted, then you can, that's what's keeping you from putting this extra vehicle on the road and having three plows going through and doing the town roads.
With with the truck as it, as it is currently, we can plow. However, we 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 are not able to salt with the, with the third uh, truck zero zero three, which is the dump body truck. Everything else plow and some sort of spreader.
Okay. Okay, so I'm going to ask Commissioner Duckett, do you have any more questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Hanchet, do you have any more questions or comments?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay. And Commissioner Lot, do you have any more questions or comments?
No, I think the answer was suffice and I think if we um, have the money, uh, we should go ahead and vote on it whenever you uh, decide we should and uh, we should get them what they need.
So this was kind of a point of order question that we had and is whether we even need to vote on this because it's a maintenance concern of Darnell's and it's he has maintenance money in his budget and that's what we're discussing. So Kyle, can you clarify if we need to vote on this or if this is just a discussion that we're having?
I would say if the board wants to do a quick approval, um, it's not going to hurt anything. Um, right now, the the procurement ordinance does technically have anything over two thousand. It needs to be brought before the board. So just yeah, as as a port of order, I would recommend just with a motion to approve.
Okay. All right. So is there a motion on this topic?
Yes, a motion to approve.
Okay. Okay. John, can you do a roll call vote?
President Franklin.
I.
Commissioner Duckett.
I.
Commissioner Hanchet.
I.
Commissioner Lot.
I.
The motion passes to purchase salt spreader.
Okay. All right, let's move on to the next item you have.
For uh, the election issue there.
Yes.
We do have a slide for that. Um, the Board of Supervisors election asked for the uh, the ballot to be printed. Um, and just to update everyone, we did, since there are no um, uh, there were no candidates received. Um, we did reach out to Attorney Best to figure out what next steps were. Um, he just got back to us uh, hour or two before the town meeting, but he did advise that the uh, the board has the option to postpone an election if there are no candidates or a strong write-in candidate campaign forming um, for fear of if uh, there are no write-ins um, or the write-in who wins does not want to run or serve, and then we have to schedule another um, election, but he said we could postpone it for forty five to, he would not recommend more than ninety days to allow for outreach and gathering of the uh, uh, try to get a candidate, at least one candidate or a a strong write-in campaign together. Um, so this was just information he passed on to us today. I'm not asking for any thoughts to be made or anything like that. Um, and I know there's going to be some some comment on it, um, but he did advise that the mayor has the uh, power to issue a proclamation. Um, and then if we do wait on the newly annexed areas after February eleventh, maybe some more voters and it may be uh, possibly a candidate, um, which is something he's looking into as well that we're going to look into is when can someone in newly annexed area run for office? Is it two years after they've been annexed in or if they've lived in their house for two years and they understand the situations and 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 the issues facing them, where they live, their street, um, and they've been there for two years and they're annexed, are they able to run? So that's something he's looking into and this is all preliminary. But because we're having a town meeting, I wanted to to bring that forward to the public, not that anything's being been considered at this time. Um, but.
Um. Okay, and I I've been passing on emails to the other commissioners, so everyone is aware. Uh, and we will want to hear comment particularly from the Board of Supervisors, but um, let's go through the commissioners quickly. Commissioner Duckett.
Um, I I think it would be a good idea as far as um, our discussion for this to to um, extend this. Um, so I'm in full support of that for uh, to give others an opportunity and possibility with the annexation and all of those considerations. Um, I I fully support your ability to extend this. Um, yes. But yeah, that's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner Hanchet.
Um, I'm in agreement. I support your uh, decision making ability on that stance. I think uh, write-in would be like you said, someone might not, someone might get written in and might not want it. So I I think the forty five to ninety days is appropriate.
Commissioner Lot.
Um, I agree with uh, extending. Thank you.
Okay, so it sounds like everyone um, likes the idea of extending. I will say I kind of have a preference for extending because if we run a special election and then we don't get a candidate out of it, we're, we keep running special elections that cost money and that take up the time of our volunteers um, and staff to do. So now that other commissioners have had their comments, uh, let's hear public comment. Do you have any, John?
I do. I have Joe Horclay, Joe.
Hi, uh, Joe Horclay, uh, chairperson for the Board of of Supervisors of Election. Um, so I I was working on drafting something which uh, which is what I I need to get run by Kevin and Patty pointed out that I had some issues, which was basically for what do we do if a write-in candidate wins? Um, and and part of the problem is that there are some people that just cannot be elected, such as any of the supervisors of elections. And so we have to basically kick them out because otherwise they get written in, it then triggers a special election. You know, if if they were to win because they are not legally allowed to serve. Um, and then in the case of someone declines to take the position, you know, can we, can we set a policy where we then just go to the, you know, next person who would have won? Which might mean in the case of a full radar and write-in election that it's like, you know, three or four people deep until we can finally seat somebody. Um, but Patty pointed out that I used some terminology that was bad and we need to look over. I think it's there, basically the town charter says um, that the Board of Commissioners shall qualify who you know, who their members are. So um, I'm not sure if we have to get the board involved and that gets really messy. Um, I'm also not sure legally what Kevin's justification is for being able to move it because I think the charter is pretty clear that it says thirty to forty five days from the vacancy, you have to have a special election. So.
He's he's aware that he did uh, he told me that, and he's um, so when I, we sent, we notified him that there were no um, candidates and that was his first thing was was postpone it. He's looking into the background and getting back to us on that.
All right, and I, and I did reach out to Brian um, to ask him, would he consider you know, putting his name in after we hit close of business yesterday and I told him basically like, look, you know, technically it just has to be here by today. So if you give it to me, you know, some sort of written notice, you know, I'll take it. And he said, no, he's too busy. And he said, maybe once his kids are older.
Kevin did advise that if if we do wait, we could put some uh, some more guidelines in place. It would give us more time to to finalize stuff as well. Um, I know the plan was to do it after the election, but that's something he said as well was if if you push it out uh, fifty, eighty, ninety, he didn't, he didn't recommend, he said forty five because that's the, you could extend it forty five just because um, that's where the charter says. He didn't recommend going over ninety days though. Um, but he's going to give us all the specifics, but that was another thing he said was you could look at the rules and make some.
So when he's saying ninety days, is that ninety days total or, you know, from the initial vacancy or ninety days from when we scheduled the the special election?
The scheduling of the election.
Okay.
Understanding, but he's.
Can I ask a question, please? Um, so how does this affect? How, how does um, the the town being in a state of emergency? Um, how does that affect the elections? Or does it affect the elections?
Um, so it does. So it does actually help us being on a state of emergency. That's one of the things um, and what Joe pointed out legally is where the the powers of the mayor come from. Um, to be able to do something like this, but there, when the resolution was passed to move the election day um, last month, there was some uh, kind of provisions in there about like uh, screenings and um, hand sanitizing station stuff. So there were uh, Commissioner Lot, there were some changes made to the to the normal election procedures based off of the pandemic. Um, and they were outlined in the last resolution. So being under state emergency does allow us to make make some changes.
Thank you.
So I'm just going to, we're we're going to keep going to take public comment because I think what we're trying to do here is if I have this power to extend the election, okay, but I'm not uh, using it without everyone being on board with that. Uh, and so that's why I wanted to hear what the other commissioner said. How far we extended and what we decide to do is a discussion we need to have with the Board of Supervisors of Election that's a little longer than the meeting. So I think we should move on to the next public comment because we're starting to get late again. John.
I have Patty Calacott, Patty. Uh, the only thing that I wanted to to mention is that um, it should be up to the board um, to determine the processes within how the election is focused, but do we need like a resolution to override the charter? And I think that is where we need the commissioners. So if the commissioners say we can extend it for ninety days, then it will be within the board to determine what the rules are for for coming up with that extended election.
Um, and I, Mayor, I can clarify it. So uh, the the process Kevin explained to me of how we would go about extending if if the town chooses to would be um, you're correct, the the Board of Town Commissioners would have to override the last resolution for the special election and pass a new resolution, but before then, the mayor could issue a proclamation or declaration um, to extend and then the Board of Town Commissioners would then back it up with their full approval. Um, with some official guidelines like this is um, the special election to be able to stay this time X, Y, Z. So that was the intent was um, if if it does choose to give me forward, the the mayor would make the first move and then the there would have be time for the Board of Supervisor Elections, the Board of Town Commissioners to to figure out the specifics and then the Board of Town Commissioners would vote a new resolution.
Thanks for the quote, uh, clarification. Appreciate it.
John, do we have more public comment?
Joe Horclay.
Um, yeah, I was gonna gonna mention first that uh, I have a conflict on March twelfth, which is like roughly forty five days after the the current special election. So um, I don't know how that's going to work out, but um, I forgot what the other thing I was going to say. Um.
There'll be more emails.
I guess, I I guess. Yeah, so so basically, what one of the things is that for any of us to not follow the election ordinance or the charter is a misdemeanor. And I don't think it'll go to the courts over it, but you know, basically it says that anybody who is found to be guilty of it is automatically kicked out of office and or fired.
Okay, um, so we're going to have more discussions with the Board of Supervisors of Elections on the details of this. So, but it sounds like the Board of Commissioners is in support of pushing back the date to give more time. So I think what we're going to do is work out the details off the meeting because it's nine, ten right now and then um, make it happen that way. So we'll move from this item into general public comment. And I just we're trying, because it's it's nine eleven. Um, what's happening is like in the public comment, we're having discussions and it's going over three minutes and it's getting a little rowdy. Um, so we're going to do three minutes. You're going to give your comment. We'll take notes if at the end of the three minutes, there's a quick answer, we will give it. If there is not, we will explain how we will get that answer out to you in the public. Okay. John, can you go through the public comment?
I have Patty Calacott, Patty. So I don't know if I can do this all in three minutes. Um, so the first one is going back to um, how this meeting is being handled because now I'm hearing everybody had three minutes for each item to speak with. And at this point, it's three minutes because it's getting late and we'll table everything. And if you decide to not address it right now, how will it become back to the public four to six weeks later? How is, how are you going to make a public forum, provide a public answer? If you're going to do it via email, then there is not a public forum to which you are answering that question. Um, I did notice that um, there is no chat available, which if we could ask the questions in chat and somebody could answer them in chat, that would be a lot easier and it would be in a public forum. Um, I believe also that the rules being put forward also severely limit the ability for the town constituents to engage with their elected officials with their concerns. Um, the public forum for the consist, this is all about the public forum. Um, this is one subject. Um, the thi- this is the public forum for the constituents. Again, email would not uh, keep those answers in a public forum. For the work sessions, I noticed in that in that uh, resolution that it says um, that we will not be able to speak unless the rules are sus- suspended. However, in the work sessions, you are actually approving some of the resolutions and ordinances and not being able to allow the public to speak at that or without pre-defining when the public will be allowed to speak if you are going to approve an ordinance or a resolution. I think that needs to be written into this document and not set at the discretion of the commission because you could be voting on something and silence the public. And I don't think that's what you really want to do, but that's how it's currently written and it could be abused by the commission. Um, the other one is um, uh, there are, the minutes don't come out for four to six weeks. So anything that we would have gotten immediate response to, we won't see for four to six weeks when the minutes are documented and posted on the town. So that was the one. I can email you what I've got here if you want to address it. If I had in public chat, I could have put all these out and you could address them separately. For Public Works, um, to ta- again, to take care of the town roads, but they are state and county roads as well. I I already discussed that. Uh, for the budget, I wanted to speak with um, regarding um, Will's uh, presentation. I noticed that the operating expenses have already gone over budget and we're only halfway through. So, and that had to do with um, bank charges, general supplies, town elections. That would, no, I'm on a different subject now. I was supposed, I was allowed to speak for three minutes on each subject. Is that not correct? I can't hear you, Sarah.
Patty, I'm sorry. So the the comments about the way the meeting ruled would have been under that topic of discussion. And so, yeah, it's not three minutes each topic after the fact. It's three minutes each topic of business as we go and then three minutes at the end. So you have three minutes every time there's a new topic and then three minutes for general items.
Okay. I I just want to make sure that you understood because you did not state this that any answers in email are not in a public forum, which is how you should be addressing any questions.
Okay, so I've just taken notes. Um, so I want to give all the public a chance to give their comments and then I will come back to the notes I just took on your comments and everyone else's comments and address them. Okay.
So.
We're going to give them that. We're just going to give the next person a turn. Okay.
I do not have anyone else with a hand raised.
Okay. Okay, so.
Oh, I have one now. Patty is that.
Um, so, okay, so that we're gonna, it it's, I understand that this is going to be a process. Um, but.
This is a new subject.
So, so there is going to be one comment period per person and. So so there is gonna be one comment period per person and that's something that's kind of happened at the end of this.
So you have a two-hour meeting, we get three minutes to address it.
There is per item, there is three minutes per person, there is the end. And that is because this, this needs to move forward. So.
Please move forward.
I want to just quickly address some of the confusion about the rules. Um first of all, there's going to be a new format at the work session where we will be a panel. Okay, and there will be um like a panel for us and then public comment will come in. We will have a visual timer for the three minutes. All the items, everyone will be able to send them to comment, but you will only be able to comment once on each item. As far as getting questions answered in a public forum, if the question can be answered quickly and we have tonight answered questions quickly and we will continue to do so. If there is a question that is general that the whole population needs to know, we will come back and provide more detailed information on in some form of public forum. Um so we want the public to be involved, we want the public to be engaged, but we also all need to not be here till ten o'clock every night that we have a meeting. All right. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
A motion, we adjourn.
Does there a second?
I second.
I can.
John, can you do a roll call?
Yes, President Franklin.
I.
Commissioner Duckett.
I.
Commissioner Hanchet.
I.
Commissioner Lot.
I.
The meeting is adjourned.
I'm tired.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.